Sarah.
Yeah.
You want to try a quick screen share to see if that works real quick?
Perfect. Okay, yeah.
Yep. Okay, cool.
Thank you. Perfect.
Is it, are we gonna go through the grant? And the expenses first? Or maybe I could ask that as a favor so I could hop off and deal with this other urgency that's happening?
Okay.
I don't know. I don't have an agenda, so.
Yeah, it's the, it's listed first.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, guys.
Hey TJ, how you doing? Hi, Sock and Kathy.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Sam sends his apologies, everybody. He, their house was broken into, their old house, and things were stolen. And so he is currently meeting with the police at their old house. He asked that I excuse him to you all and wanted you all to know that there was a break in. And just to be cautious, I guess. But, um, so he's sorry he'll miss and I think we should, I think we're in a critical mass. We're missing Frank, I think. Tammy, do you know if Frank is joining us?
I haven't talked to Frank, but I did send him a text.
Okay, well, how about if we just go ahead and start? I think we've got enough board members to start, right? We've got Marty, Chris, Sasha, Sarah, and Kathy. So I think we're good. So I would, if you guys don't mind, like to call the meeting to order at 6:01. And roll call, everybody is here from the board except for the mayor and Frank. And hopefully Frank will join us. And we have visitors this evening of TJ and Kent. I think, and welcome, both of you. But that's all I see in terms of.
Kelsey's here as well.
Well, Kelsey.
I just like to say who's here listening, just in case.
Good, 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 good. Hey, Kelsey. So Tammy, you got that?
Got it. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, I would welcome a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Chris, good.
I'll second.
Sasha, good. And I would like to just add a list of bills to the agenda, if we could. And it's just the one bill that you guys, we, we were supposed to have addressed at the last meeting. So it is in front of us this evening. But, but I'd like to modify the agenda that way. Otherwise, any other comments on the agenda? So all in, oh, yes, Kathy.
I can't seem to find the one on the bills. Is the bills then include the $4,000 for the recycling?
Yep, that's it.
Minutes I read that we were going to discuss that at the next board meeting. And with Sam not here, do we want to discuss that at the next board meeting or not?
Because we haven't voted on it yet.
Yeah, I don't know if we should be paying for something we haven't voted on.
Okay, Sam had me put it on the list of bills and that's why I added it to the agenda.
I was wondering too, because I, I remember that we were gonna talk about it, but we weren't gonna. We haven't voted on what we were gonna do with it yet. Because it wasn't on the last agenda was the problem from the beginning, if I remember correctly. That we wanted to get it onto agenda so we could vote on it and then pay for it, but that's just.
So hang on one sec, folks. Who is 7202806159, please?
That's Frank.
Oh, Frank, hey, welcome.
I can't get on, I can't get on by my laptop, so I'm on my phone.
Okay, Frank, we will follow up on that so that you're able to do it the next time, okay?
Okay. Yeah, the, the problem is, okay, before, I don't know where you are in the meeting. But this has been aggravating me for 15 minutes now trying to get on. When the Zoom link is in a Word document, I can't open that on the laptop. So if someone sent it to me in an email, I can just click on it and open it. So somehow we've got to straighten that out to make it easier.
Yeah.
Frank, on your laptop, there is a button, if you open up Chrome on your laptop, there is a button that says, Silver Plume Board of Trustees Meeting.
So maybe you guys, maybe Frank, since we've got you by phone, if you don't mind, rather than take the time on, on the meeting, just.
Right, I agree.
So we'll do it, maybe you and Tay need five minutes on the phone, Frank, just at another time.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so back to this particular issue, I thought we were, we had, we were supposed to add it to the bills list for this discussion at the last meeting. So Sam had me add it as a bill to review this evening. So if, if folks don't want to consider the bill this evening for stated reasons, then, you know, I think we need to get it clear this time so that we address it appropriately. I must admit, I'm frustrated by this myself.
We can go back to the minutes to see what we said, but I, because I swore we didn't vote on it yet. That's all I was getting at.
Well, isn't this a public meeting that you could vote on it now?
It's not posted on the agenda, though.
Of course not.
I'm just trying to follow everything to the rules that I know. I don't know for sure, guys. I, I'm just bringing it up and everybody can vote and choose how they choose.
So, yeah.
I don't think it was listed on the last regular board meeting agenda either.
Yeah, and Tammy, that's because somebody forgot to do it.
Hey, I've tried to vote.
Oh, great. Thanks, Frank.
Bye.
Thank you, Tay.
Okay, so, that's great. So, um, what I'm hearing, Kathy, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I also can't find the bills. I found, I think, everything else for documentation for this meeting, but I couldn't find the bills either. I don't know.
Did you see the emails that I sent to us before the board meeting, Kathy?
I have one and it said, hi Tammy, will you be sending the list of bills for the board's consideration at the meeting? And that's the last one I have with anything in bills in it.
Okay.
I don't know which one it is.
Tammy, what?
This is a special meeting. We had specific items on the agenda. I figured if we had bills come in through the mail, we would get them listed, but we did not. So the bills will be listed on our next regular agenda, which will be December, the second Monday in December. This is not a regular meeting. This is a special meeting for the grant application update that we received late from TJ, which was listed on the last agenda. And for the discussion regarding the budget. And the recycle trailer was actually supposed to be on the next agenda in December.
Thank you.
Okay, alrighty, that is definitely not my understanding from participating at the last meeting. So I apologize and I guess I apologize for the mayor as well, because he directed me to do what I suggested that we do. So, um, I think we should not waste further time. And I will speak to the mayor about this, you guys, and.
I can transcribe that recording for you if you'd like.
Tammy, that's a waste of your time.
Okay, well, I apologize. I really did not think at all about the recycle trailer when I put the agenda out.
Okay, I think we should stop talking about it and. So, alrighty. Then I retract my suggested modification to the agenda and would like to know if anybody is in support of the agenda as it is printed for you folks, without any suggested changes.
Yes.
I move we approve the agenda.
Yeah, I think we already went through that, Frank. Thanks.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm, I'm a little flustered and irritated. And so I just want to know if anybody has any objections to the agenda as it has been proposed. Say yay or nay. And I think most people said yay. Frank, you approved the agenda, is that correct? So Tammy, the agenda is approved unanimously. And why don't we turn to Tay, is it you or TJ is going to talk with us about the community planning strategies?
I think TJ's got it more summarized. I can jump in for details, but.
Well, I didn't really have much new for tonight, because I think what we talked about last week was, we have a scope that's roughly in the ballpark of 350 or so for, for this water quality grant. We set this meeting to have some further discussions with the budget committee last week and see where a match was so that Tay and I could then parse back the scope to, to meet that, that match, the minimum match of 10%. So I don't want to get into too much of what we could do with the budget or in the scope until we have maybe some discussion on where the budget committee is and what the board's pleasure is as far as a match being provided for this grant.
Okay.
Is it okay if I say something?
Yeah, Tay, by way of presentation, and then we'll open it up for comments from the board.
Yeah, um, we did get an email, I think it was sent to everybody, that the board was leaning towards a match of a maximum 35,000. And so we took that number and just took out, actually, we didn't really have to take out any light items. We just had to select the correct ones that brought us under that number. So that would be a perfect number if that works out. And it's the project encompasses, the main, it encompasses all of the roads that are a concern of running off into Clear Creek. So it, it addresses erosion control and stormwater runoff on Main Street, Cherokee, Silver, Daly, Jefferson, which are the two that run up all the way up to the mountain, because the, the bait, the main way we're gonna get this grant is to flip it around. So instead of doing streets and then subsequently doing runoff, we're doing runoff and subsequently doing streets. So this will allow us to provide drainage on those, those roads that come down off the mountain and wash everything into Clear Creek from the north side of town. And it, it includes crowning of the roads and replacing of the roads and the, and the sidewalks and the, and the gutters on the sidewalk, which kind of directs the, where the snow gets pushed and what have you. Does that make sense to everybody?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this, would this replace that current system we have, where the water comes down the sluice and goes into a pipe and goes under Silver Street and then turns the right angle and then comes out on the Main Street? And then flows into the creek? Would that whole thing be replaced by what we're proposing?
It wouldn't be replaced. It would be additional, because the, whatever cape comes off the sluice, I think part of that is a park project. Regardless, we wouldn't be removing, it wouldn't be removing that or dependent on removing that. It would be addressing the drainage issues as they sit right now, assuming that that drainage isn't working properly.
Yeah, if I recall, several years ago, we had to dig up Main Street because the water had somehow escaped the pipe system and created a cavern around the pipe under the street that it caved in. Would, would the whole situation included in the project?
I don't, we have a basic scope from a proposal that came out. If we wanted to include that in the project, we can re-scope some of it. But as it stands right now, no, it does not include taking that, dismantling that portion of drainage.
Yeah, so I just think we should be aware that in the past, and it may happen again, somehow water is following the outside of that pipe and eroding on the Main Street. So kind of.
Yeah, this, this is just to get money from the state and then we can plan it. We have a general scope, and then if we get the money, then we can plan it out exactly how we want it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because it's still, even though we have a, a proposal from that one company, the, the size of this project would have to go out to public bid.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good, good addition, Frank. Yeah, Marty.
Yeah, is there any environmental issues given where the flow of, what the flow of is going, we're going into the current system?
That is beyond my scope. That would be up to a contractor to mitigate, and that's exactly what this grant is supposed to address.
Okay, so that would not be something that if we put it together, all of a sudden be told, hey, you can't do this because of all the negative toxicity flowing into the, if there is any. So I mean, is there a need at all to, for, do you think any entity might look at that prior? Or might that, does that need to be addressed in the scope of the grant request, or would that be later on?
That's part of the basic permitting process of a project of this size. They would have to, I mean, the whole project is to take the pollutants out.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that the, the grant itself is water quality improvement.
Yeah.
And so we're, we're taking what is surface sheet flow off of the mountainside that is, for all practical purpose, directly flowing into Clear Creek untreated and applying some type of a treatment to it. In this case, probably swales and surface treatments of landscaping that will hopefully take a lot of that, some of the pollutants out and, and put it back in more clear and more clean. That's, beyond that, I don't think that, that we're getting into toxicology or environmental testing of the, the discharge going back into Clear Creek with this project. We're simply trying to put some infrastructure to clean it up a little bit and resolve some of the drainage. That also includes eroding streets, plows, the snow piles, including when, when snow gets plowed up, you have the adhesives or the, the additives to the snow to try to mitigate that as well as any kind of contaminants, fuels, oils, any kind of leaks from, from vehicles. So, uh, without getting too, into too much of the technicalities of it, we're basically looking at just surface treatment of contaminants, trying to, to mitigate that with, with natural flow, if you will.
Will there, is there any process whereby the contaminants would be identified?
No.
Not in this process.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for TJ, Tay, folks? Okay, anybody from the budget committee want to talk to the amount that we've been asked to reserve for this particular grant? Yes, Sasha?
Hey, Will. Um, so it's a 10%, so around $30,000 is what we'd be looking at. And after talking to Sarah, who in turn talked to the other people on the budget committee, we do feel that we have the cushion for this and that it is an important project for us to take care of. And, and it, it won't drop us down to, you know, where we're negative or anything like that. But our purse is tight and we all know that. But I think I speak for the budget committee as a whole, but we feel we have the room for this and that we should go forward with the board's approval, of course. And that's, I mean, that's kind of all I have to say about it. If anybody has any questions, I'll, I'll do my best to answer them with, with Sarah's help. But that's our, our assessment right now, I think.
Yeah, and Sasha, I wonder, can you add, you added some really interesting sort of additional considerations that taking this action might position us better for, for future grants? And TJ, of course, you might have something to say about this. But in a nutshell, you want to just elaborate a little bit about our, like, larger strategy with this?
Yeah, so, I mean, in my conversations that I've had, it, going for this grant, we really don't stand to lose anything. I mean, if, if we get it, that's awesome. If we don't, it'll help us identify the pieces that we might be missing to apply for our bigger picture grant of the DOLA Planning Grant, which in my opinion is, I mean, so, so much the direction that we need to go as a community is to really get ourselves poised and know, like, what we want to do. And, I mean, even if we don't get this grant, at least it's another thing we can show, like, hey, we're not just all about emergency projects. We really are trying to plan and, and make this stuff work. And then in addition to that, I just, are going about these things piecemeal, project by project, instead of having this comprehensive plan that TJ's been talking about, we're really just sort of cutting off our own leg. And so I really think it's important that if we go for this grant, we get it, that's amazing. Then we have a project that's happening, like, on the street. People can see that we're doing something. And then at the same time, we're spending a considerable portion of the next year planning for how we're gonna manage and what we want and what the community wants for Silver Plume. So I, to me, it's a win-win. I know it's a chunk of change that we don't necessarily want to spend. But, I mean, I, I just think that it's a really good idea. Cool. If I left anything out, Sarah, let me know. I think that that was the gist of what I was saying.
Yeah, no, no, that's good. And, and TJ, I don't know if you want to add to that? I definitely want to ask board members for their thoughts, but do you want to add anything to what Sasha said?
I'll hold off for right now. I do have a lot of thoughts and, I mean, just me being a planner, I, I, I think there's some real good validity in planning, not for planning sake, but for strategy. But I, I, I'm here to listen and I'd be able to provide some input and thoughts to the board.
Great, great. So Kathy, Frank, Marty, and then I'm gonna go to Chris, because. Great, great, so Kathy, Frank, Marty, um, and then I'm gonna go to Chris, cuz Chris is on the budget committee, but. What do you guys think?
Well, I'll start, I think it's a good idea. Uh, if, if we, you know, we get the, it is a needed project, it, uh, we can afford it. That's the biggest thing, we can afford the match, and if we don't get it, well, then we'll try again with something else. So, I'm in support of what we've, uh, been discussing here.
Cool, cool, Kathy, any, any thoughts from your end?
I completely agree with Sasha, I think it's a really good, good idea, um. If not, for no other reasons, but there are tons of other reasons, um, than to get the process down and try for a grant and prove that, yeah. We wanna improve things, I know when I first moved here, the first year I moved here, we had a runoff and a half, it was a serious one. And joking around, I mean, first year I was here, first, like, May. And I looked at my husband walking down from the seven thirty trail going. The town has been here how long and we can't figure out how to get the water off the mountain? So, you know, I think it's an extremely important project and to get that funneling properly, so it's not, you know. Flowing into businesses and so on and so forth, so I really wholeheartedly agree with it.
Super, super, Marty, how about you?
Think it'll also, um, be beneficial, as, as was stated, which is significant to mitigate the damage of runoff to the, to the streets.
Yeah, yeah.
Along with that other, the milling stuff that we put down, I think we're going in the right direction with that. Um, yeah, I think, uh, I fully support it, and then, there are so many options to have fun trying to figure out. How to spend the money, there's just like a lot of stuff we could do with it. Have fun with it.
So, so on that, Chris, what do you think?
I'm all for it, I'm really excited about this, I think it's a great opportunity, I hope we get it, and even if we don't, I think it's. Good to have out there that we're trying to get and showing that we're trying to progress forward and. The project's going, so, like Sash said, we have a little bit of wiggle room in the budget, we can make this work, let's go ahead and go for it.
Yep, good, 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 okay, so, so, um, I, I'm inclined to ask us to vote on this. But I don't know that we have to, what, what do you guys think? Should we move?
Let's vote, it's on the record.
Okay, okay, so anybody wanna make a motion?
I move that we approve the thirty five thousand dollars for the matching grants, we wanted a little bit more. TJ, go for it.
Uh, if I just might, um, suggest too, that the motion include. And authorize the mayor to sign the grant application. Um, that way, we, we have our, uh, ability to have him sign it and, uh, submit it by Friday.
I move that we approve the thirty five thousand dollar matching money for the grant application. And that we approve our mayor to sign on the grant application.
I second.
Sasha's seconds, good, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nobody is in the negative, so the motion passes unanimously. And Tammy, are you all set on seconds and firsts and things like that in the motion?
Yes, thank you.
Cool, alright, Kathy?
You guys probably answered this, but I didn't hear it or whatever, does the thirty five thousand dollars, is that sent in with the application? Or is that due once we are awarded something?
It's based on the awarding of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say no. Okay, so why don't, th- thank you, everybody, that's great, um, and TJ, wonderful, Tay, thank you for all that work. And we're standing by for whatever you need us to do over this next week.
Yep, now we just gotta get it in writing and get the application submitted and, um. Go from there, now, actually, just a question, cuz I think maybe Sarah, you work directly, or maybe even Tammy. Um, we're, we still need a lot of that financial workshop filled, uh, worksheet filled out, do we have any idea where that's at?
That, I sent that to Elliot and, um, he's, I'll ping him again.
Okay.
Just to make sure that he knows that it's a time.
Excellent, and then, uh, Tammy, I'll probably be reaching out to you in the next couple days, if I have questions, or Tay or I, however, we need to. Uh, fill in some of those last little items.
Okay.
Alright, thank you all very much.
Great, and Kathy, yeah?
Um, I just wanna say this, just so it's, um, in everybody's mind too, is we had on a wish list once upon a time a few years ago. If we could, um, Clear Creek, Sarah Wright, next to your house. On your side of Clear Creek, there's a beautiful wall that keeps the water in Clear Creek. On the other side, where the blue houses, we were sandbagging that in years when there, there's lots of runoff. And I don't know if this grant could be used to shore up Clear Creek as well, to prevent flooding.
We, we can't really do that, that's a, I, I don't even think we have the authority to do that. To operate on that wall, so that's a totally separate thing, I don't think, so, I think the short of the answer is no, that won't, that won't happen in this project.
And a couple, a couple of quick things, a- again Kathy, we, if we get the grant, we'll be able to provide specific input on this.
Right, I just wanted to put that out there be- cuz we have that place and the other place we sandbag is kinda near the post office.
Right.
And so, yeah, I just don't wanna forget those two wonderful residences.
Yeah, no, good, good call, Sasha.
Um, all I was gonna say is that the, the, uh, rock wall is the property owner's responsibility. As far as we're concerned, so your piece of Clear Creek, it's your responsibility as the property owner to. Um, maintain that wall, cuz that's interesting, because when I asked before, or when I was sitting in the back of the room, they said the Corps of Engineers. Built the wall that was by Sarah's house.
That, that was, that is true, and at that meeting, we didn't really know whose responsibility it was.
Right.
But, uh, I can clear that up in a couple of words. Uh, that newer shading wall on both sides of the bridge. Was part of the construction project when we replaced that bridge. So all our work was done by the town, part of the, uh, the new bridge was not new anymore. But that was all part of the bridge project, so, uh, we do have authority to do it, but it's. It's, that kinda work would not be the stuff I would think we'd wanna have in this grant. That would be another separate, uh, project that will probably evolve as we go along. Because the problem you mentioned Kathy, aren't gonna go away, I mean, we're still gonna get, it would. Stop flooding over wooded street and into the ads and that kinda stuff, so, there's a little background on that.
Yeah, no, that's.
Thank you.
I'm done.
For su- for sure, but we can address this separately at another time, cuz it's a need, it's a need. Cool, alrighty, so why don't we move on to Water Street, um, Kent, um, great to have you here. And, um, are you starting us off with this? I got a little bit of input from Sam to relay, and hopefully it will be less controversial this time.
Um, yeah, we're just.
One, do you still need TJ?
I, I think we're good.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
You.
And Tay, thanks.
Thank you again TJ.
Okay. So Kent, you wanna start us off here? Or do you want me to tell you what Sam told me to say?
Sure, let's hear what Sam has to say.
Okay, so it's ju- I'm the messenger, you guys, so, um, Sam was able to speak with Kelly. And, um. Oh gosh, Chris, he spoke with you as well, did he, about Water Street?
Uh, he didn't speak to me as well, but I'm sure he talked to Rick Caldwell and he talked.
Rick Ca- Caldwell, yes, right, 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 about the, um, permit for steel construction. And neither individual felt there were any concerns with, um, authorizing. Um, Kent and Co. to proceed with, um, uh, constructing with the steel.
The steel structure and the roof?
Well, he said, he said steel, so I assume that includes the roof, but.
Just steel, yeah, just the interior steel frame and, uh, the roof, has nothing to do with appearance or siding, anything like that.
Right.
That's awesome. So do we need to make an approval, or are they just good to go?
I think we should, um, make an approval, just again, so that it's on record, if you guys don't mind. Um, but Kent, do you wanna add anything of clarification before we proceed with?
Um, no. No, it's, it's, uh, it's pretty, pretty simple, we're just looking to close out the year, you get that there, um. And then we're gonna work with, um, with Kelly and, and everyone to make sure that the, the finishing touches. When we start to really build it, um, are up to snuff, and they get all the information they need about fire safety.
Sounds good, alrighty, um, and now Sam is here, you guys, but, um, any, any questions for Sam or Kent, Marty?
Yeah, what is the status of, status of the dirt work, how's the excavation or what is the? Plan before it becomes, uh, difficult to, to do, and I mean, I know, I, I understand it can be done. Cuz I've lived here for decades, you know.
So, so Marty. Start us, the status of the dirt work, thanks, you're, you, you were cutting out there, but Kent, can you give us the status on the dirt work?
Yeah, when, when we get windows with the weather, um, we're, we're working on that, and, um, we'll get that. Formed and, and all we need is a, a couple day window to, uh, to get the, the foundation to start to move. Um, if we get socked in, you know, I, I know we typically stay a little dry on this side of the mountain, so. We're, we're crossing our fingers we can get that, uh, foundation up, um, soon.
Sounds good, uh, Marty, was that all you needed to know, or do you have anything further you wanna ask?
Nope.
Thanks, any, any other board members' questions for Kent? Okay, so, um, uh, anybody wanna make a motion?
I move to approve the permit for, uh, for Kent Martin and. Company, associates, whomever, we're saying it is.
I'd second the motion.
They all, and, and, and do we wanna specify that it's for the steel component?
Yeah, sorry, for the steel components of the structure.
And the roof?
Components of the structure.
Okay, and Chris, you okay with those modifications?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, Kathy, did you say?
I said aye.
Oh, good, 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 okay, um, uh, uh, the motion passes unanimously and. Sam, uh, welcome, um, we're just about to turn to the budget.
Okay, why don't you carry on, cuz I don't have any of my paperwork or anything here in front of me, I, I apologize for my tardiness, I. Had some business to take care of. Sarah, why, why don't you just carry on, I'll just sit back and watch.
Okay, so can you guys see, um?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn in if that's alright with you guys, thank you.
Yeah, great.
Okay, yeah, have a good night.
Can everybody see the budget?
No.
No.
Okay. Hang on one sec. Let's see. Totally, okay, how about, how about now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so what I'm gonna do, you guys, is just give you a quick scan of. The bottom line numbers for the totals. Which are all of our different accounts summed together for twenty twenty one. Um, and then we can talk about specific line items as we want to, but. What I'd like to call your attention to is line ninety four here, um, and. Uh, we're looking at, the first column is our budget estimate for twenty twenty. The second is reconciliation for that year, the next line is totals, our actuals for two thousand nineteen. Uh, and reconciliation is the next column over, and then we're looking at, um, prorated. Anticipated twenty twenty, um, resolution of the budget, so. Uh, and then the next line over is reconciliation, and the final column is our important column, twenty twenty one. Um, so, the, the black numbers indicate we're in the positive, meaning we have. An, an extra hundred forty dollars, uh, if all expenses and income comes in as expected. Red numbers or numbers in perens represent, um, we're, we're in the red. Um, we're over budget by, uh, that particular amount. So, what we, the budget committee, did was to do our best to come up with a budget. That came out in the black, and we just managed to do it. Um, we have questions still outstanding, uh, in particular on. Why the overruns for the, um, uh, actuals for two thousand nineteen? We believe that those are auditor changes in order to transfer funds from one account to the next. Um, and combined with, um, this line item depreciation expense. Line item seven nine one oh, which is a, a line item that. We have not in past included in our budget, so what we believe this is. And we'll, we'll get more information on it, the hundred thirty four thousand and change is probably a compilation of years. Of depreciation of our, um, our equipment, essentially, our, our values. Um, and so we may need to include a depreciation value in the twenty twenty one. Line item as well, but until we get the, that answer, uh, I think we feel pretty confident. As a committee that we've gone through carefully, all of the information that Tammy has provided us. On the two thousand nineteen actuals, um, the, uh, anticipated expenditures for twenty twenty. And, um, uh, the anticipated budget needs for twenty twenty one. Um, the other thing I, I just wanna call attention to is, uh, in terms of whole numbers. Um, uh, our total revenue is anticipated to be five hundred twenty six thousand and change. And similar, uh, value for our expenditures, uh, leaving us with a hundred and forty dollars. Um, so, the budget committee has, um, a collection of tasks outstanding. Um, Chris is going to review our draft budget with Lee Burinato. To just capture his experience with prior budgets, to see if we've omitted anything critical. Um, and, and bring that information into us, and Sasha, you had, um, one or two things you were looking into. And Sam, you were gonna talk to the auditor, as well as our county, um, representative Brett.
Representative?
Yeah, a- about our, our calculation. Yeah, about our, our calculations on the mill levy um for property values. Um, and so um, in sum, we feel pretty gosh darn good about this budget breakdown. Um, and we feel that um the, um, our earlier discussion on um the thirty-five thousand uh of um, uh, in-kind match grant uh would come out of our operation and maintenance repair line seven one thousand. You see, we've estimated sixty-five thousand for that line item. Um, so that's where we believe those funds would come from, uh, should we achieve the grant. Um, I can get into um individual accounts, um, maybe very briefly, again, wanting you to look down at the, um, the net value at the base of, this is the general fund. Uh, and the columns are, they don't have the reconciliation, so the, the first one is uh estimated budget for 2020. The next is actuals for nineteen, two thousand nineteen. The next one over is the prorated value for 2020, and then, of course, the final column is for 2021. So again, the key thing here is, we, uh, we're operating in the, the black for um 2021. Sewer, similar with the exception of the actuals for two thousand nineteen. Um, and again, I think this is in part because of um, uh, uh, account transfers done by the auditor, um, which we're waiting for clarification on. But as you'll see, the um 2021 balance is in the black by close to seven hundred dollars. Uh, water fund, again, all in the black, um, twenty twenty-one, eight hundred in the black. And then the fire department, cemetery, conservation trust are all essentially minimal accounts. Um, uh, so I'm gonna maybe stop there and ask my budget committee folks to point me in any particular direction you think would be helpful to further clarify our status on the 2021 budget. Sasha, Sam, Chris, no?
I uh, I think that um with all the work you've put into it, Sarah, I, I feel like we're in a really good spot. And the, the few questions we have, I think with those answers, then we're, we're really pretty final and, and looking as good as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if any other board members have any questions about.
Yeah.
Anything, but, I mean, as, as far as I'm concerned, after our last budget meeting and everything, um, I really think that the time that you've put into it shows, and it, it's looking really good. Um, as far as being able to turn it over to your auditor and everything.
Yeah, good, thanks, Sasha. Uh, Sam, Chris, anything from you guys before we open it up to the board?
No, I agree a hundred percent with what Sasha said.
I do too.
We're honored, I think you're doing great and everything you have into this, we're really close to the final, final of this. It's looking great, and I really appreciate all the work you put into this, Sarah, I don't think we could've done this without you.
Right, sure as heck appreciate that, but um, so Kathy, Frank, Marty, what do you, what are you thinking? Uh, what questions come to mind?
Yeah, I'd just like to mirror that, it is just an awesome job that was done. I realize also it's an overused word, but it is certainly appropriate in this context, so again, thank you.
Much appreciated. Uh, Kathy, any, any questions from you, your end?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, and Frank, how about you?
I just wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you, I know what you've gone through, and.
Yeah, you've done it before.
I've done several times in my life, so wonderful job.
Well, I, you guys, I really appreciate you all saying that, I, I hope that's the case, but um, and, and I mean, the thing that the committee and I were, are hoping for is that we will um be able to sort of get a pre-glance by the auditor, um, to help us, um, hopefully, um, minimize surprises and corrections that we might need to, to do. And I also, as always, wanna um thank Tammy for all of the patience she has shown us and, and all the information she has provided to us. So, so my question is more, okay, this, Tammy, maybe this is to you, I mean, we need to finish this up before the fourteenth of December.
Before the.
You need to approve it, uh, you need to approve your budget resolutions on the fourteenth, because your mill levy certification needs to be filed the very next day.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, so we're gonna try to answer the questions that were briefly highlighted, you guys, uh, in the overview. Um, long before then, of course, we, we had the holiday, so we were unable to uh act on some of that stuff. But um, is the board gonna see this one more time, or is this the, we're gonna show it to them on the fourteenth again?
Yes, it will be on the agenda next meeting, so if there are changes between now and then, uh, those will be, we'll need a final version for the meeting.
Good, and, and we should, Tammy, for that meeting, also include the um, the levy stuff, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so before then, Tammy, one of the things I need help with is to get the sewer levy from our documentation in the office.
Okay.
Uh, and if I could enlist your help on that, that would be super.
Yes.
Um, okay, um, so we don't need to do anything further tonight, this is just a, a walk through the spreadsheet. Okay, good, 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 good. Um, and uh, before we lose everybody, Sam, I guess I, I do wanna go back to um the mistake I made at the beginning of the meeting, which was um, the board wishes to um have the opportunity to discuss and vote on whether or not they want to proceed with purchasing the recycling um equipment. And, and I um, uh, that was a gross oversight on my part. So um, I guess I wanna raise that as something that we very distinctly want to put on the agenda for the fourteenth, as Tammy indicated, is in our notes from the last meeting. And the, the board doesn't wanna vote on whether or not to authorize the invoice, they wanna vote first on whether or not they want to purchase that equipment and then consider, is, if I'm understanding correctly, you guys, right?
Yes, I feel that way.
Yep. Alright, so just put that on, on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Okay, sounds good, um, well, good, alrighty, then Sam, do you wanna have any closing remarks? Before we go?
Yeah, I guess just caution everybody in town to watch out, there's somebody going around breaking into places. Uh, broke into the house that we're moving out of and, and kicked the front door in and splintered the, the door jamb and stole three big jars of change, and Joe's little jar that he had has been saving his um allowance in. So just keep an eye out for things, there's bad things happening in town. Little discouraged about things right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Sam?
Yeah.
Was that the only break-in, or has there been others?
That's the only one that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
You're gonna be.
Sasha? Oh, just separately, they've had um three break-ins in Idaho Springs. Um, where they were vehicle break-ins, and then the Idaho Springs Police said that they felt that they were moving towards home break-ins. So who's to say if it's the same group of people or not, but there's a group on the rise right now.
I, I don't wanna name any names or, or, but I got suspicions. I, I hired a gal off, off of Facebook to, to help us clean last Wednesday. She was, had posted on Clear Creek County's um Facebook page that um, she was looking for work and, and needed some money, so. I hired her and she come up and, and cleaned for two or three hours, and I, I paid her in cash. And while she was there, she seen the change jars, and she was supposed to get back with me on Friday to see if we needed help finishing up, and she never did, so leaves me a little suspicious there. I, I hired her to get generally a little help with the cleaning and, and to help her out, because, you know, she made it sound like she was in a bad, bad way, and I guess no good deed goes unpunished.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, well, so, so um, uh, I, I would entertain a motion to um adjourn the meeting.
I will make that motion.
I'll second, uh, I beat you.
Go for it.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, you say it, have a good night, guys.
Alright, take care.
One more quick thing before everybody signs off.
Oh, Sam, yeah.
Um, our attorneys have asked me to, to meet with each of you and, and pass along some information. Um, I'll be getting ahold of you during the week here um to do that, so um, look to meet with everybody one-on-one. So I'll, I'll give everybody a call when I find a time to do that.
Yeah, and uh, good, Sam, and then uh, the budget committee should probably, um, we need to pull ourselves together maybe one more time with all the additional information that we might have.
Okay.
Um, Sam, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it, it does, um, maybe, maybe a little later in the week, so I can have a chance to get ahold of Brent. And Chris, have you talked to Lee, has he, have you had?
Yeah, I, I was waiting to email it to him till today to let him get through the holiday, he called me today and said he'll look at it, so.
Oh, that's great, oh, yay!
Alright, so let's do something later in the week, um.
Okay.
Whenever everybody, whenever everybody's available.
Alrighty, so motion passed to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah.
I guess.
Thank you, thank you, so, Tammy, Tay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Damn, you're gonna be in town tomorrow?
Me?
Are you gonna be in town tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll be working at the railroad, but I'll be around after work.
Okay, no, I just wanted to drop off those containers.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Alright, did you get enough supper?
Yeah, I've been eating things I shouldn't eat for like three days, hamburgers. That really.
Okay, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Thank you, yes, I was delightful.
Alright.
Uh, and yeah, I, I got a question about what happened over there, but that can wait till your day off.
Okay.
Alrighty, sir.
Yeah, we'll talk to you later.
Stay safe.
Alright, bye-bye.
Bye.